Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. To start things off, I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk or planning commissioner or planning director to call the roll.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowers?
Present.
Commissioner Mendez is excused. Commissioner Lehman?
Present.
Commissioner Campos?
Present.
Commissioner Teal is excused. Commissioner Henler?
Present.
And Chair Cochran?
Present.
Five members present, sir.
The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Spectrum Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded and you can watch on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wo.gov. Click on the video on-demand link and make your selection. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table and you may also online and also may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask you to silence all your cellphones to prevent any interruptions. For those present in the meeting, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come forward to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience that the Planning Commission, that Washington State requires public meetings like this one to be held this evening, not only to be fair but also to appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may either be benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. An objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Like the record show, there are no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience at this evening who would object to anyone on the Planning Commission to hearing any of the items on the agenda? Hearing none. Let the record show, there were no declarations. We, as the Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to better make recommendations to the city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed on the official record of the city council that they will use in making their decision. I encourage you to take the full advantage of the opportunity. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from August 18th, 2022. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had the opportunity to take a look at them, and I would entertain a motion to approve or any questions from Planning Commission members at this time.
This is Commissioner Bowers.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
And I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from August 18th, 2022.
This is Commissioner Lehman. I second it.
Great. It's been moved by Commissioner Bowers and seconded by Commissioner Lehman. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show, the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. Moving through the agenda, we do not have any unfinished business or old business. We do not have any public hearings, so we're going to move right into the workshop portion of our agenda. So I will turn it over to staff and to Mr. Gonzalez for item number one, which is the Code Amendment on Residential Design Standards.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. You may recall, this is an item that was last brought to your attention back in May, last spring. Staff is working on a fairly significant effort to update the past municipal code to accommodate a variety of residential housing options and typologies. Obviously, the intent is to encourage or increase different housing choices in the City of Pasco, also to promote a variety in site and building design itself, and increasing design standards and simplicity. At the last meeting back in May, we went through a fairly lengthy presentation going through each, I guess, element of the proposed standard, minimum lot sizes, block standards, site design standards, parking, access, et cetera. And for the last several months, staff's been looking at that proposal to make sure that it could align both with what council and comprehensive plan goals have intended, and also to align with local and market needs, which has been helped with the assistance from the Home Builders Association and the Tri-Cities. They've been able to provide some input and help us throughout this process. We met virtually with representatives from the Home Builders Association on July 13th to discuss comments on the initial draft recommendations that were shared with the Planning Commission in May, and I just wanted to highlight some of those questions in general. Clarifying and confirming minimum lot sizes for the R4 zoning district, clarifying minimum density as required in the comprehensive plan, a request of decreasing the site frontages for our most densest zoning districts for residential uses, that would be R2, R3, and R4, and clarifying potential conflicts with reduced setbacks on attached housing. There was also questions on the consideration of what is considered in the lot coverage definition, parking limitations, that you may recall was the discussion on whether parking should be allowed in the front, along the frontages of multifamily units. Today, currently, that is not permitted. Questions on minimum buffer distances between parking and the access to the site itself, clarification on driveway widths for attached housing such as townhomes, ADA circulation confirmations, and vehicle and pedestrian circulation within a site, for example, in apartment complexes. So we went through a fairly lengthy and detailed kind of line-by-line effort with the, with members from the HBA, and the result of that is attached as Exhibit A in the staff report. And so we can, not much has changed since we brought this back to you in May. There's been some minor refinements on some of the language, just to make sure that we weren't either over-regulating in the sense of being too prescriptive, or we were missing something that needs to be included. So on the, if you could scroll back three pages, one more. So a minimum lot, actually one more, apologies. So this would be the proposed minimum lot size standards, and as you can see, the biggest difference across all of our zoning districts is that right now, there's a standard lot size for each zoning district, and standard lot coverage for each zoning district, et cetera. What we propose to do is still keep the zoning districts intact, but also include standards for the housing typology itself. This allows for a variety of more housing units to be produced at different densities, which certainly helps us meet our comprehensive plan goals. Also allows a little bit more design flexibility for the builders and the development community. If they have a townhome, that might work in a more, I guess, more dense setting, like the R4 district, or maybe one with a little bit more space potentially in the R1 district. And it's also important to keep in mind that our densities are still enforced via the comprehensive plan ranges. So that will always be intact regardless of the minimum lot sizes, setback flexibilities, et cetera. So you can see how that looks like in this table. For example, in the R2 district, a duplex would require a 5,000-square-foot lot, and in the R3 district would require 4,000 square feet. So it's just kind of an easy way to follow what you would need in each zoning district based on the kind of home product you're trying to, trying to build. On the next slide, we talk about minimum site frontages and widths. There's some dramatic changes on this one from what we currently have in the code, and this is kind of one of those areas where in January, council adopted that large effort we had for House 1923 to allow multiple units on more of our residential zoning districts. But this is an effort to sort of make sure that you can actually construct a duplex in an R2 lot. So it allows for some more flexibility via reduced frontages based on the home type and the residential zone itself. And this building setbacks, you may recall that in the fall of 2020, staff initiated a housing choices survey with our development community. So it was a survey that was intended really for our development partners to get their feedback on barriers, challenges with our zoning code or regulations that they think should be addressed. And I think setbacks was, was pretty high up on the priority list, particularly our rear setback. Right now, our rear setback, so the distance between your neighbor in the back and the back of your home, is equal to the dwelling height. So if you have a 35-foot home, you would require a 35-foot rear setback, and that was also on top of the front setback and the side yard setbacks. So to top off, right off the bat, you would lose considerable amount of your lot size just from setbacks. And what we've done here is borrowed what's been done in Kennewick and Richland and many other communities and just reduce that. Obviously, they can go lengthier than that, but it certainly allows for more flexibility when you've got a rear setback that's a little bit more appropriate for a city growing as fast as we are. On the next slide, building height and lot coverages. We are not changing any building heights, although we are reducing them for the, apologies for the cottage, cottage housing. And the intent of that is that those aren't typically two- or three-story housing products. They're, they're single-story, meant to be smaller units on a smaller lot. So with, beyond that change, all of the heights are remaining the same. So we aren't increasing height everywhere. And we actually aren't proposing any lock coverage changes outside of the R2 district. So everything else remains the same as currently exists in the PMC. Many lock coverages were changed in that effort via House 1923, which Planning Commission adopted last summer. And again, some more of the site design standards and regulations for access and circulation for both vehicles and pedestrians. We did have a fairly lengthy discussion, both internally and certainly with the development community, so that we could make sure that what we had intended and what the intent is of this, or of these provisions makes sense in practicality. So there were some slight revisions to, in particular, the ADA reference. We now directly reference the American with Disabilities Act minimum circulation width, so we can have that within all of our multiplex and apartment complexes. A reduction for off-street parking requirements for studio and one-bedroom apartments, that's a big one for us, particularly as the more parking required, the less space you have for the actual unit itself. And the building community felt that even that reduction would be significantly beneficial for the construction of more, smaller apartment units. And that we do think it is appropriate in, in some cases and at some extent to allow for parking along the frontage of an apartment complex. We don't think it should be entirely covered with parking, as that may prohibit pedestrian uses and might interfere with the aesthetics of a project. But we also want to provide some flexibility depending on what kind of product is proposed in Pasco, and we don't really have a lot of variety today to base that off of, and we don't want to prohibit that in the future either. And so that, what we are proposing is, is a shift where right now, today, we don't allow parking in the frontage on apartment complexes or multifamily projects, and to allow parking, but it shall not exceed 10% of the total off-street parking. So if you have 100 parking spots, can't be more than 10% of those 100 parking spots, or 20% of the entire frontage. So if you have 100-foot frontage length, it can't be lengthier than 20% of that frontage. So it still allows the building to be located closer to the building, and it's just an option. Doesn't have to be followed, but it is there in case they propose perhaps like a garden-style apartment complex where a courtyard's in the middle and some parking may be appropriate in the front. It does allow for that to occur. So that's one of the bigger changes that we're proposing. And beyond that, staff is working with our consultant, pending comments from the Planning Commission this evening, to prepare the actual ordinance and bring that back to you in October for a potential recommendation to city council. So with that, I'll conclude this presentation. I was always happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners have questions or feedback? I think one of the goals tonight is for the staff to get any feedback you have on where this has come. So I think, you know, we had a lot of good discussion and even some public input in May. So feedback or questions for staff?
Commissioner Campos?
Go ahead.
I just want, yeah, I just want to just basically just give my approval for this plan. Wanted to really say thank you to the city staff for working on this. It's, I think it's much needed, and I do agree with some of the things highlighted. Obviously, the setbacks, the rear setbacks was a, was a big thing that we looked at, and so I totally agree that that's something that we should do. And then I know that parking was also a big thing that we had discussed, and especially with the frontage and the apartments. But I think the way that you presented it tonight, I think that does make sense, and I approve. I think we should go ahead and do that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or feedback from commissioners for staff? I had one question, and I shared the previous comment. I mean, I think that you guys did a lot of great work with home builders and the other feedback we got. The dwelling height setback, or the setback that was previously dwelling out was a big deal, I think. And then, the question I had was around building heights. We're not making any change except for cottage. How do our building height, residential building heights just compare? Are we pretty much similar to our surrounding communities? I mean, I know there's always a concern about allowing buildings to go too high, and maybe it's more of an commercial concern than it is residential, but do we compare fairly well?
Well, we do, actually. I think it was in 2018 that we actually brought to the Planning Commission in mid-2018 some changes to the heights in the residential zoning districts to align a little bit more closely to what our neighboring communities do. And while we have a 45-foot height limit, for instance, in the R3 and R4 zoning districts, we do have a provision via a special permit, so you can exceed that. So we do have a few, both commercial and, I don't know if we have residential structures over 45 feet, but if there was a potential for a 52-foot building, there is a process for an applicant to go through that via the Pasco hearing examiner to get that resolved.
Great, thank you. All right. Any last questions or feedback from, for staff? All right, I guess we move on to item number two in the workshop, which is a memo on the downtown Pasco master plan, and I assume that's Mr. Gonzalez as well?
Yes, and good evening again, members of the Planning Commission. We are very excited to release to the public and to the Planning Commission the very first draft downtown Pasco master plan. We've been working on this effort with our consultants' framework for about a year now, and you may recall that they had presented in the earlier spring. We're really excited because we think this plan represents not only the, the spirit of what we had hoped we would get for the downtown master planning effort, but certainly the, I think, the interest and the passion and the excitement from, from our community members and business owners and stakeholders and staff, and, and Planning Commission members and council members about what our downtown could be in the future. And so what we've done this evening is take excerpts, excerpts from the presentation that was provided to city council on Monday, and we would like to share that with you this evening. So again, I think one of the benefits of this plan is that it's allowed us to sort of take a step back and really think about what our downtown could be in the future. So there's a significant emphasis on action, and as you'll see on the next several slides, that's exactly what this plan is about, this plan of action. And on the next slide, the, the action of this plan is focused on identifying the vision guided by our goals, achieved the strategies, but realized through, again, these actions. So there's a significant emphasis on implementation that we can use to move the vision of Pasco citizens forward, at least for our downtown. This may be a little bit difficult to see, but I can read this to Planning Commission those online. The, the vision for downtown as established and as identified so far via public comment was that we would have a downtown that is lively and authentic, a downtown district that showcases our history, a downtown that is connected to the Columbia River, and a place for all ages to live and enjoy. I think in general, those are all statements that any downtown would love to, to achieve, and certainly are those that I think meet what's been expressed by our community members. We've had a lot of public engagement, both in-person, virtual, email communication, one-on-one phone calls. We've met several times with businesses and business owners and property owners online and over the phone over the last year or so, to just capture their thoughts and their interests and what they'd like to see downtown, or just to answer their questions, and even sometimes just to hear them talk. And it's been really helpful, I think, for staff to hear that directly from the folks that are vested in our downtown community, and certainly for our consultant group, because again, the intent was just to make a plan that is relevant for us in Pasco, not kind of a compaste activity. So we've held two major workshops back in December and one in February, both focusing on separate aspects. One is general downtown public visioning, and a separate one on Lewis Street itself, because there's a potential for some significant capital investments and public investment in Lewis Street with the near completion or soon, maybe a year and a half or so from the Lewis Street overpass being completed, and what that corridor will look like, not only between Second and Fifth, but even extended all the way through 10th in the future. And on the next slide, you can see what our community members came up with. This was a workshop that was really well-attended, held downtown, and there's a lot, there's a lot. This is a fairly busy map, but I think what it indicates is that we have a lot of creative ideas from our community members that we would like to use as action steps via our implementation plan of the downtown master planning effort. So those are sorts of, all sorts of ideas here. It's pointing out where vacant buildings are at, where potential garden and, you know, parklets might, might be best, parking lot locations where there's potential options for non-motorized transportation, like a bike lane, you know, issues with freight, for instance, maybe where to reroute truck traffic, potentials for gateway. So there's a significant interest in wayfinding, so that people can actually find downtown, not only from Pasco, but certainly as they come across from our neighboring communities, and places for events and festivals and gathering spaces and public spaces. So it really was a fairly lively event that attracted really diverse stakeholder group interested in our downtown, and this was one way that our consulting group was able to capture that and place it all on kind of one visual for all of us. And this is a potential concept for Lewis Street. This is a concept that includes a mid-block pedestrian connection with artistic, with art being used right in the middle to increase that in our downtown community, bullbouts to allow for safer pedestrian crossings over the Lewis Street corridor, widened sidewalks, tree planters, so that we can bring some more of, some trees, et cetera, and shaded structures to the downtown, pedestrian-oriented lighting, catenary lighting, bike-friendly. So there may not be a dedicated bike lane, but it is designed safe enough that you could ride your bike on Lewis Street in the future, done with, with, with good design in mind. On the next slide is what we would call a festival street, and this has been a, a concept that's been tossed around, I think, for many, many years now. That began way back when the engineering and planning and design was done for the South Peanuts Park-Pasco Farmers Market effort, and that was what to do with Fourth Street between Lewis and Columbia. So this is a potential where you've designed a street that works for both those traveling via all modes, but also works for people who would like to hang out and have a festival and an event downtown. What's great about this is that it could really take advantage of the investment at Peanuts Park and the Farmers Market Pavilion, but also take advantage of the outdoor dining opportunities offered by the vendors and the restaurants that utilize the Pasco specialty kitchen and the, and vice versa. So really good opportunity here, again, conceptual, but again, shows that there's a lot that can be done within our existing right-of-way. There's a lot that can be done with our existing environment and sort of the network and structure that downtown has. It really does provide us with a variety of options to move forward with. Not all of these are perfect, and not all of these will remain the same, the implementation process. But I think what they do show is that it is a different way to, to consider what our downtown could look like in the future, and our consultant, I think, has captured that in this illustration here. Talked about wayfinding, and the city's been working with our regional partners on a wayfinding initiative for several years now, and I think there's some of these signs actually popping up in the near future. Of course, we would like to highlight our downtown. I think when you take a look at, from this perspective too, you can see that while we're separate from our Columbia River, it's, the distance isn't too far. And as Pasco continues to grow and we see development and redevelopment occur along some of our travel corridors like 10th Avenue and 20th Avenue and H Street and Lewis Street, Sylvester, et cetera, you can begin to see downtown's role as a function of the entire city, but also within the central Pasco area as well. And so we certainly would like to focus on thinking about ways to be a little bit more creative with introducing and getting folks to see where downtown's at in relationship to the rest of the city as they travel in and out throughout the community. There's been a lot of discussions about both public and private investment, and this is a really kind of high-level example of what that could be for us, particularly with regards to private investment and housing. That's been a big issue for us citywide and really nationally, but certainly here in Pasco, trying to tackle that issue head-on. So a part of this also includes updating our downtown development codes and standards to allow for more housing, townhomes or multi-story units, et cetera, to introduce that to downtown. That's been a comment expressed by the Planning Commission and many others, and this is an opportunity for us to do that. In fact, through the comprehensive plan amendments that are going through the docket process right now, the establishment of a downtown land use would allow exactly this to occur. By establishing a land use for the downtown area, we can develop special and custom standards and development regulations that maybe provide more flexibility, or provide more standards so that we have, you know, tree planters every 30 feet, or that we have awnings every 60 feet, et cetera. But also, on the housing side, to allow for increased densities, potentially increased height. These all come through the Planning Commission at some point, but it's the first step of many in getting to reintroduce new housing, particularly private, private market housing into the central Pasco and downtown Pasco area. So at the council meeting, there was a mention, I think there's roughly 30-plus implementation steps or so, and so we won't mention all of them this evening, but this is what they look like in the planning document. So as you have some time to review the draft plan, you'll see these implementation steps in the actual implementation chapter. So for example, this is goal number three for improving lighting and safety in downtown. Develop a lighting plan for downtown. What do our lights need to look like downtown? Do they all have to be the same as they exist in the rest of the city? Can they be lower, et cetera? Creating regulations to allow parklets within the public right-of-way, designing and funding a parklet pilot program to help get that off the ground, develop a wayfinding plan for downtown, and there's an agency who would be responsible for that, a potential timeline, and eventually will be a cost associated with that, so that we can begin to prioritize the implementation steps as well based on all three of those elements. So again, a really brief summary, but on a really important plan for us. And the, the document was, I think, too big to email, but I know that all of you have been provided a copy of it, and we plan on having it up on our website within the next few days, and then issuing a series of press releases and, and public releases to begin to let the public know that the draft plan is out for your review, and it'll be out for that review for, for roughly 30 or so days. review for roughly thirty or so days. We are working with our consultant team to host a online workshop and webinar within the first week or two of October, where we can ask attendees about how they would like us to prioritize the implementation step. Which ones do they need to, you know, do we need to address now, which ones do we need to wait for a little later time, et cetera? So a lot more work to do. I think most would say the implementation of any plan is the hardest part, but I think there's a lot to be, I think, a lot of credit to those that have been a part from the community of developing this plan. It's a really grand effort, and again, happy to answer any questions we can from the Planning Commission this evening. Thank you.
Great, very nicely done. Commissioners, any questions or feedback for Mr. Gonzalez or staff?
Hi, this is Commissioner Bowers.
Go ahead.
And Jacob, I am just really proud of all the work that has been done. Downtown Pasco is an amazing place and has so much potential, and you've captured it in this plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowers. A great, others?
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lerman.
I really appreciate how much time and attention the staff has put into presenting and sharing out this master plan. I love how the historical buildings of Pasco is included in the plans, and so thank you very much for a really well-made product. And if I may ask a question?
Sure.
I would love to hear from, from Mr. Gonzalez, what is he most excited about in this plan presenting out to the public, if that question's okay?
That's an interesting question. I think from a staff perspective, I think a lot of us are really excited that, you know, the community members, business members have been asking for a plan for quite some time, and I think there's been some variations of some planning efforts to an extent in the past. But I hate to use the word comprehensive, but I don't know if there's been a comprehensive approach to a plan for downtown, and I think this effort certainly captures that, and it does so in a way that I think resembles the spirit and the excitement and the expectations of not only our downtown businesses and residents, but certainly of the entire Pasco community from our elected officials and hopefully to the Planning Commission members as well. Staff's really excited about this effort. There's been a lot of staff involved with this from a variety of departments, Public Works, Parks and Rec, Finance, of course, the Community Economic Development, our executive team, and I think what we're really excited about is begin implementing it. So won't be too long before we come back to the Planning Commission with step one.
Thank you. I appreciate your share.
Go ahead, Commissioner Handler.
Yeah. This is, this is the exciting plan, you guys. Nice, nice job. We've talked about it before. Are you encouraged that the proposed downtown plan will allow for mixed-use development, you know, actually promote mixed-use development so that we can get people living down there? Because I've always found, as we've talked about before, that a successful downtown plan, the ingredient is really residential, a healthy residential component of the downtown plan. So, you know, I briefly scanned over this, it looks like there's some discussion about that, but do you feel that there's opportunities for residential development? Because it could be a prime ingredient catalyst for moving this thing forward. Anyway, but anyway, just, it's exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly think there is going to be more opportunities for housing options, whether it's mixed-use or standalone housing itself in the downtown area. I think this is the part where we begin to align all of our planning efforts, the Housing Action Plan, which is kind of getting a slow start, but it's underway. Its emphasis is to increase housing options, and one of the things that we're excited about through that effort is looking at incentives in areas that we want to focus more housing in, and it could be these redevelopment corridors or activity centers such as downtown or some of the other major nodes in the city. Are there incentives we can provide to developers? Are there other things we could tweak in our regulatory structure that may encourage more housing or at least remove unnecessary barriers? And we can take sort of some guidelines and references from other communities that have been successful but still relevant for Pasco. So the short answer, I think, is absolutely. I think it'll take some time, but it is our hope that it won't be a regulatory barrier to it, more so just waiting for the market to be able to support that, and when that can't happen, is there a way for us to provide some appropriate support for those to occur?
And Commissioner Handler, that is one of the action items in the plan, is to increase the availability of housing options in the downtown.
Very good. That's, that's good to hear. All right, any other comments, questions, feedback from commissioners for staff on the downtown master plan?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Campbells, just want to give my feedback. Would like to echo the sentiment of my fellow commissioners on the excitement and how well-done this plan is. I think that, you know, we all know that it could be beautiful, but the way, the approach that was made of making sure that needs are being met, from transportation, the different ways that people transport to get down there, to celebrating our culture and doing all the celebrations of everything that would happen down there, I just think like every box was checked with that. And so, well done, city staff. I think we're really looking forward to it, so thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, with that, we'll move on to our final workshop item, which is a verbal memo on the Broadmoor master plan.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission, and really just a short update on where we're at with another fairly significant master planning effort for the Broadmoor area. You may recall that we are concurrently developing both a master plan and the associated environmental impact statement, the Non-Project DIS for the planning area. And we just wanted to provide you with an update with where we're at with that. On the master planning effort, again, that plan is intended to incorporate design guidelines, visionary statements, what the community in planning area may, the area may look like in the future. And one of the last things that we're refining on that with some of the property owners is what the development standards would look like. So that's very similar to what we talked about in the downtown plan, and is very similar to the residential design standards update. So just making sure that what we've placed in that plan makes sense for Broadmoor as we intend to accommodate quite a significant amount of growth in that area. Now, on the environmental impact analysis side or statement side, staff's been working with a variety of both departments within the city and outside agencies and property owners and various consultants to make sure that we have the necessary mitigation. Can't simply just throw seven thousand housing units out there and expect everything to be okay. So in particular, a big emphasis on transportation and transportation mitigation, so the layout of the streets, the role that the streets will play, the functional classifications of that street system out there, the level of improvements, including funding sources for that, which may include tax increment, finance district out in the area, which would be one of the very few east of the Cascades or maybe in the state as they've been allowed now in Washington. So we're refining that effort internally and with our consulting groups. It is our hope that we'll be back here in mid-October with a draft of both the plan and the Non-Project DIS. The Non-Project DIS and both plan will essentially require a thirty-day public review comment period, and then we'll be back later in twenty twenty-two with the final plan for your review. So quick update on Broadmoor, we're still working on it, but just wanted to provide the Planning Commission with a brief update. Thank you.
Thank you. One of the questions I keep hearing from folks out in that area is, you know, are there going to be similar efforts like workshop with the current residents and current, I mean, there's some property owners that are, I think there's a lot of fears like, you know, what are they going to do with this, or what are they going to do with the gravel pit, are they going to build businesses right next to my house kind of thing? Are there attempts to engage the current residential folks there that are kind of worried about some of these things because of the uncertainty they have?
You know, we actually engaged with quite a bit of them when they received a notice for the Compris of Plan Amendment. So there was a lot of discussions over the phone and via email we had with residents adjacent to the site, and we actually expanded the notification on that because in reality, three hundred feet from the Broadmoor site doesn't hit too many homes. So we, we felt it was appropriate to extend that distance a little bit more so we can actually capture residents that might be affected by it. And those discussions all seemed to be fairly positive. I think one of the things that we've tried to express is, as indicated here on the screen, is a heavy emphasis on the mitigation, is the idea of not just planning it out there and leaving it alone, but, you know, trying to pre-plan and identify all the potential mitigations, whether it's the mitigation of disrupt step, critical area habitat, and working with the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife to determine what that mitigation needs to look like. I think the other part, too, is realizing that, you know, we're looking, although some areas in the Broadmoor planning area may develop within the next five to seven years, there's some portions that are going to take fifteen, twenty, thirty years to develop, including potentially the gravel pit. And so while we don't want to talk about moving forward with sub-area plans or anything along those lines, I think there's portions and areas of that Broadmoor planning area of roughly thirteen hundred acres or so that are going to require consistent analysis and just attention over the coming decades. So we hope that we've addressed some of the comments and concerns from the public, and our Public Works Department has really been out in front of that on the transportation side, hosting webinars and online discussions with folks over the past year or so.
Excellent, thank you. Any other questions, comments, feedback for staff on this memo on the Broadmoor master plan? Okay, hearing none. I don't believe we have any other business, any other business we need to cover. Okay. Well, then we're moving on to, if there's no other questions or comments, I recommend a motion to adjourn.
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Go ahead.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Campbells, I second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. This meeting is adjourned at seven twelve PM. Thank you, everyone.